Good evening. Welcome to the Mount Vernon City School District Special Board Meeting. Today is Thursday, February 27th. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee McDonough.
Present.
Trustee Maribel. Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Middleton.
Present.
Trustee Njenga.
Here.
Trustee White. Trustee Kerwin.
Here.
VP Kelly.
Here.
President Saunders.
Here.
Trustee Maribel.
Present.
Okay. We have a quorum. So I'd like to introduce Ed McCormick from HYA to do a presentation for the superintendent's search. Thank you, Ed.
Good evening. This is an exciting time. It marks the completion of Phase One. That's the good news. Perhaps you will not be too excited when I tell you that there are two more phases to go. But I trust me those next two phases will be equally exciting and certainly important for the district. This evening, we'd like to take you through the leadership profile report. And that's a summation of all of the information that we received from your community, from the online survey. And we will also ask you at the end of the meeting to approve the desired characteristics report. This desired characteristic report is important because it allows us to put the requirements that you have for the next superintendent on the website and be part of our advertising and recruiting campaign. It also will be the -- you will use it also, again, as part of the interviewing process, as we will use it as part of the recruiting and interviewing pieces that we do. So this evening is a key part of the process, and we'll take you through that. Just as a matter of order, this is the introduction that I'm doing. Karen will take you through the LPR. I'll take through the desired characteristics. We'll take questions as we go, although I would prefer that we took questions at the end. But if it's something burning, if you have a burning question and want to ask us, we will be happy to respond. After that, we'll go to and talk about the desired characteristics piece that will be posted. You have a copy of that and see if there are any modifications or additions or anything you want to do before accepting it and before we put it on the website. Any questions about the process and the protocols that we use this evening? And we will also give you a quick update on where we are with the search itself, although this is the official beginning of the search. But we are looking at some interesting candidates already. There is a -- one thing before I ask Karen to come forward. I'm extremely proud of this number. We have 962 total participants. 152 of those we talked to face-to-face, and the rest were done through the survey. That's a magnificent number. You may not think so, but as one who sees a survey almost every other week, that is an outstanding reflection of your community. I've had districts of 20, 30, 40,000 that did not have as many participate in person or via the online survey. So at some point in time, you don't have to do it now, give yourself a hand clap. It's an outstanding community. We talked to 18 focus groups, had 10 individual interviews, and one community forum. I was impressed with all of those venues. People, some say, well, maybe it could have been more, but they came with vigor, had interesting questions, and hopefully we were able to respond. We have, to show you how the community is in tune, we did have a glitch in that we shut down the survey on the 23rd, but I told everyone we would shut it down on the 24th. So we upped it again last night, or night before last, for another 12 hours, and 25 people responded. So it was worth the delay and worth the fact that we had to send you two reports over the last couple of days. So forgive us for that, but, you know, no good deed is unpunished. There's a -- with that, we'll follow the protocol that I asked, that I just laid out. Feel free to ask us questions. As I say, I prefer it to end, but I'm an old country boy. I can -- we'll take care of it as we go if that's the will of the board. Karen?
Good evening. I think this -- and it's working great. Again, I'm Dr. Karen Gieland. I am also on this team, and I want to echo that thanks because it makes everyone's job easier when you have the kind of participation that we've had. And I also want to just say, it has been a real pleasure getting to know the various constituents in this very fine school district. It's exciting. It makes it exciting when you know more. And how can you not know more about a district after 962 people have put in some kind of -- have put in their two cents, right? Have told you a little bit on their views of the district. So in that process here, I would like to emphasize again that we asked the same three questions to every group and every individual that we spoke to. So out of those 152 participants, they were all answering these three questions, and they're very simple. The first one being, what do stakeholders value regarding our schools? What are those strengths? Put very simply, why Mount Vernon? The second question, what are the issues facing the district? Not right now, but also in the next three to five years. Those issues that, from whatever your constituency or background would be, whether you are a parent or a student, community member, or work in the district somehow, it's what do you see as those issues coming up? And the third one is then taking all of that information, and with all of that in mind, what are those personal and professional characteristics that you would like to see in the next superintendent? And so I'm going to get into a little bit. I'm certainly not going to let you -- I will not read to everybody what every 152 people -- so if you were thinking I was going to do that, don't worry. We'll talk in generalities because, as you would imagine, there are patterns that emerge from the data. There are things that multiple people said, and those are the really important things then, not only for us to discuss this evening, but for your superintendent's search team to, again, keep in mind as we are vetting through those candidates for the position. The community survey is broken into administration, faculty, support staff, parents, community, and students. And that was a self-select. When someone took the survey, I'm sure everyone in this room took the survey, when you did, you would choose, self-select, which group do you belong to when answering these questions? And then that helps to understand the data when you look over the survey. When you see the dots along the line, those dots, each one represents a constituency group. So let's get -- oh, I guess I'm the person in charge of this. We'll move to the next slide. And let's start by looking at the responses. The strengths, people spoke so easily and freely about the strengths in the district. And I think the most important thing that came up was the location. It's just where we are right now. Where we are right now, not only is it close in that proximity to New York City, but everyone spoke about how easy it is to get there, the number of train stations. And we're very proud here that we have more and more accessibility through train and rail than other cities and nearby communities on their way to New York City. Not only that, people talked about the highways, and they work in different directions. So it's not just coming in here and the accessibility to Mount Vernon, but it's going somewhere. And where do people go? Well, very quickly, you can go from an urban to a rural feel. You can go to the beach. You can go to the city, to the arts. People spoke about all kinds of places they could go, but then they always wanted to come back home. And that idea of home was very strong and pervasive through all the data. There anyone you talk to that here in Mount Vernon, we have a feeling of home. There's a feeling of family, even for people who are not related, but we stay here. We tend to, even the folks who are working in the school district, tend to send their children and their grandchildren. And I've also been told many times that this is a welcoming city, but with a small-town feel. So that family atmosphere, that sense of community, which is so strong and so pervasive around here especially, that is something that, if you're not from here, I've been told, is something that you feel that welcoming into the fold very quickly. And then what ends up happening? Well, I have been told in part of the data you'll see that we are a true melting pot. There are a lot of cultures that come together within the community of Mount Vernon. Not only are we welcoming, but we're welcoming to a variety. And that diversity is ethnicity, it's culturally, it's financially. So there's all kinds of types of diversity, too. So it's a very exciting place to be. But I don't have to tell you that. You live here, you know that. What we do is we share that with prospective candidates, for sure. So the staff, the staff, that's another strength. We have staff members here who graduated from Mount Vernon. As I said, they send their children and grandchildren. They develop relationships with families and students, often attending the student productions, the events, the activities, getting truly involved and invested in what students do. And this was mentioned by students, that they recognize school personnel and community leaders as well. They talked about the policemen, the firefighters. The kids said, quote, "They get to know us." And they were very proud of that, and that's not something that you see everywhere. The students spoke about -- oh, and the dedication of the staff, of course. The students spoke about opportunities here, that there's a variety of curriculum, but also when you're getting to the high school age, our high schools are very different, and they offer something for everybody. And I was told that over and over again, that there is something for everybody here. And what they really liked is, in the rich history of Mount Vernon, where you have accomplished students, people who have left here, graduated, and done very great things, whether they're in the arts, in business, they're actors, they're in their own right, authors, accomplished folks are then accessible by students, and they value that, and they mention them. The inspiration, encouragement, and support that students receive was noted by many, including the students. So it wasn't just people saying, yes, that's what we do and what we value. It was reinforced by the students that, yes, they see that, too. So that's all very -- all of the strengths. There are individual comments that go beyond those main ideas that did bubble up. The second question was about the challenges. And first and foremost, we have to talk about the financial challenges and declining enrollment, and those go hand-in-hand, too. They talked about the New York State fiscal oversight, but not necessarily as being a challenge, more that the superintendent, they were looking for someone just to be aware and to work hand-in-hand because everyone spoke about, in a very positive way, where do we go next? Because these challenges, it's not something that we're stuck in forever, but it's we're looking for a way to move forward, to plan well, and to move on from it. So with those financial concerns, there were also student achievement concerns, but you can imagine that, too. Because as you have declining enrollment, the allocation of resources become more important and more prominent in people's thinkings. So what we have to be concerned about is, as curriculum needs are there, it also gets into the resources that go along with the curriculum. It's the professional development to teach something new for principals, for support staff, for teachers. And then it's also having all of the resources to support the curriculum and the curricular choices. Another thing that was brought up as a challenge is just in the planning itself, being accountable, having those strategic plans, and always going back to those goals, having measurable goals that are set. But folks talked a lot about wanting to make sure that as moving forward, we continued to do that and did that more, and kept student achievement and keep our students in the forefront as a priority of everything that we do. One thing that was brought up as a concern is, was more of a cautionary concern, and that had to do with diminishing resources, being careful that our various schools don't get pitted against each other. And this was brought up by the staffs within the school, but also the students and the parents, that they wanted to make sure that press was positive and honest, and that we were championing all of our schools when we were doing our messaging to make sure that everyone knew all the positive and good things that were happening in each of our schools. So that was something that came up over and over again. But the low morale was something that came up in every group, that they were concerned about how people were feeling. Well, let's go back to the financial, to, as you have fewer resources, of course, that can happen, but they brought up collective bargaining agreements being coming up this year, the teacher's contract that has not yet settled. Those were things that they brought up as concerns and being something that was hard to move forward with because the schools, when we were looking at reorganization and also with the fiscal situation and concerns, personnel changes, and that reflected in the comments, changes that had happened, but it was also anticipatory about changes that could happen in the future. And that was working on the current state of morale. I want to add again, there was a positive note that when you were thinking about morale, it also wasn't -- it wasn't brought up as a state that is a permanent state. It was more of, here's where we are right now, and looking at those kinds of characteristics, because everyone always wanted to jump to that third question, too, on what we could do and who could help us move on from it. So the honesty in the answers about that were striking, but also very, very helpful. And they all go back to the district culture. As a district, as a family who feels like they operate as a family, within a community where sense of family is something that's very, very important, it's important to then talk about, well, how do we, as a family, behave? And that's what's really meant in the district culture. Parent engagement comes out as number one. Parent engagement, not just talking with parents, but it's bringing parents in to the decision-making. It's having them feel as if they're valued members of that decision-making, and that's on a smaller scale, but it's also at a district level. And they also talked about, parents talked about parent engagement, and it was helpful hearing from them on, they didn't just say, say it and drop it. They brought forth ideas. And they talked about multiple modes of communication, types of communication, and hearing things, even bad news. They said, just tell us early. Tell us the truth and tell us early, and that's okay, and bring us into it. They talked about, someone had even mentioned, I believe that's also in the report, about backpack notes work. So instead of always worrying about getting it out electronically, where some folks don't get to the electronics, they always get to the backpack at the end of the day. So the backpack notes that come from school, that was one thing that they wanted to make sure I brought back, that everyone heard. And I could relate to that, that makes sense. And then with that, they talked about vision. And you will hear later, as, of course, that's one of the desired characteristics, is a leadership with a vision, who articulates the vision. But they talked about the vision right now, and they weren't real sure what the vision was. And so that this is all about current state and something they see as a challenge. They said, as a challenge, we all need to see that vision and be on the same vision and path together. They talked about, as we did that, the roles and responsibilities of everybody who's within this learning organization, and that when you have challenging situations and a lot of challenges going on, it's easier if we can be more efficient and we're not doing double duty or feeling the added stress of messaging that might come from multiple directions. So the roles and responsibilities piece was, had a lot to do with everyone who has a role of maintaining within that role, respecting the roles that everyone else is in, that would be wherever you are in the organization, those who are above and below, thought to be in that hierarchy, to maintain those lanes. And I think there are a few different groups that talked about people staying in their lane, that sometimes what it means is, I'm the last one to hear, or I don't know, or I had, parents were talking about, I was talking to the principal, and I ended up telling the principal something, and they hadn't heard it, but the parents had heard it from another channel, and they said, that makes us feel uncomfortable, too. So the communication kept coming up in a lot of different ways as being something to be worked on or something to be a challenge to overcome. And that's not surprising. I have never seen an organization that didn't say that communication was somehow an issue, but that really, they were specific in talking about those roles and responsibilities. So that's interesting. And the concept of trust, well, of course, as all those other issues were happening, then trust itself starts to erode and making everyone feel as if they're part in the organization, whether it's in decision-making, in setting goals, in going back and evaluating those goals. They want to know that their contributions are going to be heard, they're going to be valued, and their time will be well-spent. And those were the main challenges. So going to the survey results, as a reminder, this was the online survey, and this was the one where we had the 25 extra at the very end, which is fantastic. It was really good to see the results from everyone coming back. Oh, it's right in front of me. So this also takes those ideas of the strengths and put them into various categories. You'll see the letters at the end. These are the top five that came up from all of those six constituency groups. And the first one here, technology is integrated into the classroom, that TLs for teaching and learning, and that is a strength. Teachers personalize instructional strategies to address individual learning needs in teaching and learning. And what that shows is those top two strengths both have to do with teaching and learning. That's a very positive thing. The district engages with diverse racial, cultural, and socioeconomic groups. That's community engagement. The fourth out of the top five district strengths is the district employs effective teachers, administrators, and support staff in its schools. That's one of the managements. And the last one, district technology, infrastructure is sufficient to support use of technology in the classroom. So this was something, or this is something that shows those strengths from each of those groups, anyone who took that online survey. So what do you do with that information? The next part was asking about those leadership characteristics. And it's important to take a look at these five top leadership characteristics. One is to effectively plan and manage the long-term financial health of the district. When you think about all those interviews that we had face-to-face with everyone, that's not surprising either. Foster a positive professional climate of mutual trust and respect among faculty, staff, and administration. That's community engagement, which, again, in a place where community is so important, that's not surprising. To recruit, employ, and retain effective personnel throughout the district and its schools comes in at number three. Number four is to provide transparent communications and provide a clear, compelling vision for the future. So when we just stop and think for a moment of the similarities coming through in the online surveys compared to what we saw when we were meeting with individual focus groups and individual people face-to-face, when you see these same ideas coming through it from both channels of eliciting information from the greater school organization's community, it's, it just accentuates and punctuates each of these as being the top things that we're looking for and being important within the district. So this is very hard for everyone to see. It is in the survey data. But what this is about was, everyone who took the survey was asked to select the four attributes or the leadership attributes that they deem as most important. And then just stepping back and taking a look at what's blued and what's grayed. The blue shows, in that constituency group, which were their top answers, which means that one across the top and then the third one down, those were the top four of each and every group. So for those who can't see what that is, let's see what they are so it's easier for us to understand. The top one there is effectively plan and manage long-term financial health of the district. And that makes sense. So we're all on the same page. Everyone sees that as their number one. And that came in at 52% of the respondents. The next one at 44% is foster a productive professional climate of mutual trust and respect among faculty, staff, and administrators. And the two that were grayed out in the middle there, where it wasn't necessarily their top, but it didn't mean that it wasn't something that they responded to, were the parents and the students. Everyone else saw that. That ended up coming in as number two. And number three was, and we heard this before, recruit, employ, and retain effective personnel through the district and its schools. And then the last of the top four of the four that people selected as deeming most important was provides, oh my goodness, oh, provides transparent communications. Yes, as I stumble on my communication of it, that's about communications. And the groups that picked that were And the groups that picked that were the parents, the students, and the teachers. Who are often the ones who are in the receiving end of communications, too, so I just wanted to mention that. So again, to highlight these ideas and strengths that came up in the interviews, very similar to the kinds of things that we saw in the survey results, and all of those survey results, at the end of the executive summary that summarizes what the individual focus groups and the community forum that we held, on those comments, what you'll see underneath after the executive summary is what was said. And it'll be the answers to each of those three questions, starting out with the strengths, then those challenges, then the desired characteristics. And all of that is in the report. At this point, I'm going to pass this back over to Mr. McCormick to talk about those desired characteristics. Thank you very much.
Any questions about the survey, or the focus group input? There is a, I'm going to share with you some words about the, yes. I'm not, yeah, we did the community focus groups, and the guys had to come over and tell me which was my left and which was my right, a couple tabs, so I don't know if that was a good optic for the community or not. Thanks, guys. So I want to share some words with you, in terms of the way that we have structured the, the desired characteristics piece of it. And this will be the lens that we will use to evaluate all of the, all of the people that we talk to, all of the candidates that we evaluate. And, and you also will have this as you, when you get ready to interview the candidates, and, and everyone will go through the same lens. What we've told everyone, quite simply, is that it, everyone goes through this lens, it does not matter if they're black, white, female, male, internal, external, everybody will be measured and evaluated through this lens. There is a, so, but I want to, I want to talk, I'll go through the words here, and they're, and they're pretty self-explanatory, but, but I want to talk about the concept of how we will approach the desired characteristics in looking for and evaluating potential candidates. It's obvious that if you look at the things that we've seen on both the online survey as well as a focus group, an experienced leader would be preferred. There is a, someone who's passionate, who's able to use research data, has experience with educational best practices, is a visionary, all of those, all of those good things that we talk about, and experience as an effective leader. So the, and the second part of the, of that is, do I have it? There is a direction is everything. Relationship and consensus builder. An outstanding communicative, professional, and open environment, transparent, develops partnerships, collaborative, is visible and actively engaged in the community, and that includes the buildings, and prove, record, proven record of a developing trust with community and staff. Quite frankly, I've been working on this model, because I, I think that leadership is probably only two parts of leadership, we put a lot of words around it, but one is the ability to manage people, and the other is the ability to manage the operation. So you, we could put it, we could put a thousand words out there, but they got to be able to manage and interact with people, because people are the ones they have to help, to who we, who need the help in the district. And they need to, and you need to be able to manage operationally. So, so I don't want to get too carried away about today's problems, for, for a leader that will be here for, I'll jinx myself and say, five years, 10 years, because today's problems go away, and if they can't run and manage the district across the board, then they, they will have a short-term tenure here in the district. So we'll focus on today's problems, but we will look at it holistically, to run a district where certainly needs healing, from a personnel standpoint, from people's standpoint, it needs a unifier to bring groups together around a common vision, they, they need, need to be able to show respect, some people said they didn't feel respected, some, they feared, they, they had fear in the process. So we'll do those things, but I would expect those things will go away, if we find the right person, those things should go away relatively quickly. But you still got to manage the reorg, you still got to manage academic improvement, you still have to manage the financial issues and, and wherewithal to get from, from where you are today to where you need to be in a solid place, where you're somewhat comfortable that you can make it year to year. So, so we're looking, we're trying to find that portrait of a superintendent that says he can do all the things to engage people, but also do the things to engage the, the district itself, the technical pieces of it. The strategic plan comes to mind, and implementation of the strategic plan. A number of people talked about a visionary, and a vision, as if they did not have a strategic plan, and I believe there is one. There is, but it, but the implementation of it, it escapes a lot of people in the district. So the individual needs to be able to do that. So, so we have fashioned the desired characteristics around a person who can develop relationships, consensus builder, as well as manage the district on a long-term basis. So that is a, that is, that is our goal, and the people that we bring forward should be able to simplify those two requirements. There is a, if not, you should send us back to the drawing ground, drawing board, not, don't, don't put me in the ground yet, but the, but that, does that, does that make sense? So when you look at the full sheet of the desired characteristics, and one we're asking you to improve, we're not looking for a one person, a person who's one-dimensional. What you need is someone who's going to improve academics, and improve relationships in the district, one who's going to help the board understand their role and their responsibilities as it relates to the district, because, believe it or not, some people complain that perhaps you were a little eager and tended to move into, into their pathways. There is, so all of those things need to be figured out on the people's side of the equation as you move forward, exactly how the superintendent's going to relate with the board, the board is going to relate with the staff, the board will relate to the community. So the, so there's a lot of work ahead of us. So that, you notice I've just moved into the district, I'm, I'm already part of you. So the, but that is, that is, that is the desired characteristics, based on what we're seeing, we're emphasized initially, the reorg, we're emphasize some of the trust issues and, and relationship issues, but we were, we will focus on Mount Vernon as a holistic district, and what it needs to do to be successful five years down the road. With that, Madam Chair, we'll take any questions that you may have.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Just one clarification on page two of the strengths, it has that residents appreciate the beauty of Mount Vernon and its surroundings, as well as the housing stock with relatively low taxes for Westchester. I don't think that's pretty accurate.
And, and it may not be.
Okay.
I, I, I did not try to prove it or disprove it, it is a, but somebody in your community believes that.
Oh, my.
Karen just told me quite a, quite a few.
Compared to what they're used to, maybe, I guess.
But they, yeah, there may be other things that you would disagree with factually, that's why we come at it three or four different ways, but we did not try to change thinking, we, we made no judgments, as hard as that is for me, we, we did not judge what we heard, we just reported.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McCormick? Not right now? So, so what do you know, what's, so what's the next steps, I guess everybody wants?
The next, the next step will be that if you approve that, approve the, the page that we gave you on desired characteristics, if you're okay with that and approve that, then tomorrow we will put that up on your webpage, we'll put it up on ours, and it would be available for all applicants to see, and evaluate their own skills against that, against that document.
Trustees, any objections to the desired characteristics page? Any questions? So he wants us to approve it, is it okay for us to approve it, are we approving this?
Make a motion.
All right. Any questions, okay? All right, so.
Can I have a motion to approve the desired characteristics for the superintendent search? Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Thank you.
Hey, that's it.
I assumed the vote was over with.
Okay, thank you.
You know, you should, you should give yourself a hand, you. We will continue to keep you abreast of what's, what's going on, and to that end, you should know that with your vote, the, the search is now officially begun. But you also should know that 25 people have already submitted their applications, and so we are, we are well on to, I believe, bringing back to you on, the date is?
Do you want to go to the next slide that has our time?
The, yes. We're bringing it, we're bringing the slate back to you on March the 24th, I believe that's on your calendar, and we're well on the way to having a very strong slate, we got a very good start. There is a, a, a number of sitting superintendents who have applied, they're, they're, probably one or two, three, I believe, out of state, that have applied, so we'll give you all of those demographics as we go along, and, because quite frankly, we have not vetted any of them, they just sort of come into the system and we see them, but we have been working on this, the first phase, but that's part of the second phase, and I'll give you more detailed information on it as we go forward. But I will tell you, 25 at this stage is an outstanding number. There is, there is, also on your calendar should be the initial interviews, will be March 29th, that's a, we have not moved any of these dates, although we did move the, today's beating out by a week, I believe. There is a, and the finalists' interviews will be April 5th, the, and the board should be in a position to know their preferred candidate around April 5th, they, the same day as the finalists. On those days of the interview, you will be asked to come, spend the day, make your decisions before you go home. So the, and we'll, we'll provide you whatever information you need, we'll have the, all of the information will be set up in the board's portal, you'll have access to it well before, well before the interviews. There is a, the, we will do the background checks, and, and I understand that, and I got the note on the background checks, but that should be done in the first week of April, consistent with any contractual work to be done, and it should be, that says target for public announcement, we're not telling you when to do the public announcement, it should be target for available for public announcement, so you'll make the decision on whether it's that week, the next week, or whatever the case may be. And we still anticipate that the superintendent will be available to start his or her responsibilities on around July 1st. Any questions?
In your, in your experience, is it, is it average to see that many applications in, that fast, 25, that, is it normal?
No, it's, it's abnormal, but in a good way.
Okay. That's a good thing, right? The other question I have is, how many, how often has it been your experience that even with all those candidates, the board really can't align on a candidate, even after the finalists and all of that? Is it, has it been often?
Not with me, no. The, let me answer it differently, I expect to bring to you highly qualified folks for the position, and that, and if, if we can't do that, and we can't certify that they are highly qualified, I'll come back to you and follow my sword and say we need more time. But I don't, I've not had to do that either, so trust me, it's a very, you have highly qualified candidates, and you will have a difficult time selecting the final candidate, but because of their quality, rather than any other reason.
Sounds good, all right, so is it a motion to adjourn?
Sure, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion.
One in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.